Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March meeting and public hearing of the Economic Development Authority of the City of Lynchburg. I will, right now, we'll do a call to order and we'll do roll call to make sure everyone sees who's here today. William Leverne?
Here.
Louise Mitchell?
Here.
Patricia Mosby?
Here.
Georgia Ann Snead is absent. John Stone?
I'm not. I'm here.
Good morning, Georgia. John Stone?
Here.
And Mark Strohsneider is here. I hope everyone's had a chance to read the minutes from the February eighteen meeting. Does anyone have any additions, subtractions, or amendments to make to the meeting, to the minutes as presented? Would someone please make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion. Bill Leverne makes the motion.
Please, thank you. Is there a second?
Louise, second.
Thank you, Louise. We'll go through a roll call to approve the minutes. Bill Leverne?
Aye.
Louise Mitchell?
Aye.
Patricia Mosby?
Aye.
Georgia Ann Snead?
Aye.
John Stone?
Aye.
Mark Strohsneider is an aye. Thank you. Minutes are approved and submitted for approval to record. Next, we will conduct a public hearing for Virginia Episcopal School. Ted, would you please help us with the verbiage?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, okay.
Yes.
The authority received the application of Virginia Episcopal School for assistance in issuing industrial development revenue bonds not to exceed fourteen million dollars for the purpose of an academic building, the Pennell Smith Building, and to refund approximately three and a half million dollars of bonds that were previously issued by this authority. The, you know, this is a public hearing as a result of an advertisement being placed in Lynchburg News once a week for two successive weeks. And today, we have Tracy Shaw, who's bond counsel, and Garth Ainsley, who's head of the school, who can tell you about the project. The application was in the Dropbox, and I'm sure everybody's had a chance to review it. But at this time, the chairman needs to declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone speaking in favor of the application.
All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the VES request for bonds. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the school?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Tracy Shaw. You have before you a resolution of the authority asking for the issuance of up to fourteen million dollars in Economic Development Authority bonds to help Virginia Episcopal School develop a, build a new academic building of approximately fifteen thousand square feet called the Pennell Smith Building. That should be about ten point five million of the issuance cost of the face amount of the bonds. Three and a half million, roughly three and a half million will be used to refinance two thousand fourteen bonds of the authority that were issued on behalf of the school. The bonds are, Garth Ainsley, who is head of the school, is here if you have any questions about the project itself. Briefly stated, the bonds have a term of twenty-five years. They have rates of two point one seven percent for the first ten years, two point three seven percent for the next five years, and then there are two periods of adjustment, two rate adjustments at twenty and twenty-five years, based on the five-year treasury note, five-year treasury bill rate plus two point five percent with a cap of five point seven percent. The bonds are secured by a deed of trust on VES's property. Otherwise, the documents, the loan documents, there are no liquidity covenants or debt service covenants. Bank of the James is buying the authority's bonds. The authority, of course, will issue notes, which are, along with the real estate, are collateral for the payment of the bonds. The authority has no obligation on the bonds, except to the extent that VES pays on the notes. The bonds track the notes, the notes track the bonds completely. So there's no obligation on the authority beyond what VES pays on the notes. Garth is here. He could tell you more about, I'm open to questions about the bond issue or the legalities of it. Garth is here if he, if you want to know more about the project, about VES. He's certainly here to answer questions. And if there are any questions I can answer, I'm here to answer them.
All I'm going to say is congratulations on the rate. As a banker, that's, that's a great rate.
One good outcome this year.
So, in a rising rate environment, congratulations on getting locked in.
Would you like to say something?
Four recognizes Mr. Garth Ainsley, who's the headmaster of VES.
Just thank you for considering this, and, you know, we, this academic building is pretty critical to our school right now. We just have a old campus. We've been around for a hundred and five years, and we need more space. We're, we're at capacity. So, and we're really excited about this project and eager to move forward with it as soon as we can.
What, what subjects, or what, what will this building entail? What will it encompass?
This is going to be our humanities building, so it'll be our world languages, English, and history departments. They're currently housed in two, our two oldest buildings on campus, Jet and Pendleton, which were served as dormitories, classrooms, all sorts of things over the years. But they're sort of, they're small spaces, and we need, need more room right now.
Then do you plan renovations to those buildings once they're vacated?
We would love to, that would, that's, we'll be down the road. It's trying to renovate both Jet and Pendleton to.
We hope to see you back when that happens. We hope to see you back when that happens.
Yes. Well, we've had some very successful fundraising efforts in securing the naming opportunities for this building. And so we feel really good about the strength of our enrollment, the strength of our fundraising efforts. This school's definitely on a, on a bit of a good momentum situation right now. So we're, but I can, I can provide any more details as needed.
That's great. Does anyone on the committee have questions for either Mr. Shaw or Mr. Ainsley?
No, it seems pretty clear to me.
Bill has a question, I think.
I'm just curious what the enrollment is currently and what is the ratio of live-in to, to local students?
Yes, so currently, we're approximately two hundred and sixty students, which is at capacity for us right now, and we've been at that enrollment for about the last three or four years. So we feel very good about that. And where we've been approximately a third students, one-third students from Lynchburg, two-thirds from out of town. And that's been a pretty steady rate over the last decade. But we, and we feel like that's a very good ratio for VES. It's, and we, we love the students we get from Lynchburg, and that's been a strong tradition for a lot of years. And, and we're also bringing a lot of people from, you know, around the world, but also especially from North Carolina and Virginia to Lynchburg on a pretty regular basis. And it's pretty remarkable to me that I can go almost anywhere in this country and run into someone from VES who has really fond memories of other time in Lynchburg.
And what is the gender ratio currently?
We're approximately fifty-five percent boys, forty-five percent girls. We don't have a hard and fast rule as to how that plays out. That's just sort of where the enrollment picture falls right now. But that's, we'd like to keep it approximately fifty-fifty.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions?
Mark?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mark?
Again, is there anyone here in opposition of the bond issue as presented? There is no one speaking against bond issue?
Now, you can now close the public hearing.
Since there is no one in opposition, the public hearing is now declared closed.
Thank you.
Mark?
Okay.
Okay. May I speak?
The board has heard the presentation. You've seen the information provided in the, in the hearing, in the packet. We'll now go through a roll call for.
Mark? Yes.
Yes, I hear you.
Not Mark. William Leverne?
One, Ted has a question before we do the vote, please.
Yeah. Well, you have, as, as, as you said, you have a resolution which has been prepared, which recommends to city council, that, as city council is the elected body over which the authority exists. The city council also has to approve these. So you have, you have in your Dropbox, and I hope you looked at it, a resolution of the authority authorizing the issuance of the bonds, as denoted by Mr. Tracy Shaw, and that you, the authority does recommend to city council that it also approve the issue.
Does anyone on the board have any questions concerning the resolution?
Should I make a motion that we adopt said resolution?
That would be most wonderful.
I shall move that we adopt the resolution to support the city issuing the bonds for the benefit of Virginia Episcopal School.
Second.
Is there a second?
Just a second.
Motion's been made properly second to accept the resolution to move forward the bond issuance to city council. We will now go through roll call for vote. William Leverne?
Aye.
Louise Mitchell?
Aye.
Patricia Mosby?
Aye.
Georgia Ann Snead?
Aye.
John Stone?
Aye.
And Mark Strohsneider is an aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diddy Authority.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Blue Ridge Water Authority Ivy Creek Interceptor Project. Ms. Upsher?
So you all heard this at the last meeting, that the Bedford Regional Water Authority is doing the Ivy Creek Interceptor, and Greg Paul from Water Resources came, and there's a presentation, I think it's a design build, and it is in process of being designed right now. Several of the EDA's properties are being asked that an easement be drafted for that. And so I just went to Tim Mitchell because you all had questions last time about this project. And I believe there, I sent a Zoom link out to Tim, as well as, he was going to share that with Bedford. So I saw initially on the, I don't have any names, so I saw initially on the Zoom call, it looked like some people that I didn't know who they were, so they're either from the public water authority, because they're not here in the, in the council chambers. So I would just say, if, if, if they're here, to, they can maybe give us a status on the, on the project, and, and you all may have some additional questions for them, that maybe if they couldn't give us all the answers here today, they certainly could get back to us, given that we're trying to use two forms of technology here.
Okay. Is there anyone here on the call from the Bedford Regional Water Authority?
Yes, this is Rhonda English. I'm the Director of Engineering at the Water Authority. Happened that we've been talking about this project for many years, probably as long as I've been with the Water Authority, probably for at least twenty years. But for questions, I will direct that, I have Lindsay Swain that's with CHA. She's with the design firm that's working on this project. So I'll direct most of the status of that project to her, but I am here to answer any questions as well.
Okay, and Rhonda and Lindsay, both, if you all would do me a favor for the minutes of this meeting and just type into the chat your names and titles, I would really appreciate it. And Rhonda, thanks so much, you know, for being here. And Lindsay, if you just give an overview of where things stand right now. The authority was given a presentation at the last meeting, and obviously, you know, none of us are interceptor experts, so we might not even know the right questions to ask, but we will do our best. Thank you.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So just, I'll start out by saying that I, I am hesitant to call myself an expert on anything, because that usually means I get asked a bunch of questions. So I refer to myself as an interceptor enthusiast, so I'll go with that. But, um, yeah, my name is Lindsay Swain. I'm the lead engineer for the Ivy Creek Interceptor project. And as far as an update and status, we're, design is underway. We're finishing up survey actually this week and the early part of next week. And so, you know, kind of preemptively to get, to get things in order and to start getting organized and getting all the information that we needed, we reached out to Greg Paul at the Lynchburg Water Authority, and, you know, just had a discussion with him about, you know, in general, what the project was, what the goals were, and then reached out to him to ask, you know, what the easement process would look like through Lynchburg and, and with the EDA. And so our schedule, as far as overall design, we're looking to finish design in the summer. And so then construction would start sometime in this fall, you know. So I guess I'll kind of stop there with kind of a description of the project, unless there's anything specific you'd like to know technically, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about easements.
Lindsay, I have a question. Will the properties, will our properties that are offering the easement, or if we give the easement, will those properties have access to this line? Will there be built-in places where whoever buys that property can access that line?
I mean, that would be, the intent would be that the sewer would be accessible for the folks, you know, on the property. And Rhonda, you can speak to that as well. But I had assumed that, you know, any of the sewer that we run across, EDA parcels, you will be able to connect into, I know that Rhonda and I have talked about and looked at, you know, developments and things that are up and coming in the area, and that's, you know, part of why the future flows, you know, for development.
And the sizing of those lines, they have been sized to be able to handle, you know, all developments through there. And we've worked with the city of Lynchburg in lines. There may be some agreements that have to go back and forth between the city of Lynchburg and the city purchase back into the lines that we've constructed. And I know that that's something that Brian Key, our director, has had discussions in the past with Tim Mitchell and Greg Paul about. And I think it was a matter of, you know, if the city of Lynchburg found benefit of it, then there might be a certain, you know, a small portion that they would want to contribute towards the line, just as that capacity purchase.
So the lines would have existing access for someone who bought the property. They wouldn't have to break in and, and, and rebuild. There would be something already there that they could tap into without any kind of new construction. Would that, would it be designed that way?
When you talk about new construction, what do you mean?
Well, if somebody buys the property and builds something on the property and they want to tie in, there'll be an opening for them to tie into. In other words, they're not going to have to break the line and put in their own opening. You can design it so that there's an opening for each of our properties.
Yeah, I mean, if we coordinate with you and then tap them so that you can know where those are for the future. I mean, we would definitely need to coordinate that ahead of time. Otherwise, you would just need to, you would have to core into the sewer line, you know, like you would for a new, new construction. But, I mean, as long as Rhonda doesn't have any issues with that, that's a pretty minor design, you know, change. We would just mark those in the field and make sure that we have the connections where you need them.
Yeah, I, I, I'm over my head on that, but it seems to me that if that could be designed in, it would be to our benefit and the purchaser of the property's benefit to have that, that connection existing.
What we find a lot of times with, you know, new lines, if you don't know what's going into the, that property might actually be more beneficial, because you could have a connection in that line that doesn't get used, because it's not in that, you know, prime spot for where they have that connection. So there's advantages either way, but if you know roughly where that footprint might go and where they might want to flow into, you're certainly putting in a.
Then, then I withdraw my, my question then. I mean, I, I, that makes more sense. If it might be in a different place and it's.
In our earlier discussions at our, at last month's meeting, the question came up as to whether there would be an onsite supervisor, you know, you are dealing with Ivy Creek, a waterway, which anytime there's construction, there's always questions about contaminations and et cetera. Will there be somebody onsite, either with the city, with the authority, or with the Egress, and how does that work?
I know we'll have an inspector that'll, you know, check, probably daily basis. And Bill team will probably have somebody as well that'll be checking on fairly regularly. And certainly, we will welcome and expect that the city will want to have people there as well. Probably with a combination of that, that should be addressed, and we do have to go through the full permitting process. Then Lindsay might be able to speak a little bit, you know, more to that on how that will work and carry through through the project.
Yeah, so we have multiple environmental permits that we have to acquire for this project, because we are working in and around a waterway and crossing Ivy Creek in a few different locations. And so all of that information will be provided to anyone who really wants to read it, and it'll be, you know, reviewed and as part of the project will be incorporated into the contract documents. And so any sort of environmental restrictions, erosion, sediment control measures, anything like that will be incorporated into our engineering plans. And then, as Rhonda said, I actually, I'm a people manager at CHA, and I have a staff of about four or five inspectors that report to me. And one of our inspectors will be onsite full-time for this project, ensuring that all, you know, erosion, sediment control measures, environmental permit requirements, there probably, there may be some time of year restrictions or things like that, where we can't get into the, into Ivy Creek and do any work. All those types of issues, they'll be fully versed on, and they will, you know, have the authority to make sure that that is being followed to a T.
So Lindsay, this is Margiet. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Tourism for the City of Lynchburg and Staff to the Economic Development Authority. And as much as I'd like to say that we, all of the departments in the city communicate with each other flawlessly, that is not the case. And so even in this information, going back and forth, there's, there's been some issues. So I would like to, Rhonda or Lindsay, to just request, number one, we have an industrial park that butts up against this project right across the creek that has over five thousand employees in it. I know you all are going to run into rock. I know you're going to be doing blasting. And so I would ask that just telling the city department, such as Water Resources or whomever your normal contact would be, I would like to be contacted in our office to make sure that our tenants have a heads-up and know exactly, you know, what is going to be happening right there across the creek. And, and then anything that you all are doing, just if there can be a note there, that the Economic Development Authority, you know, just like the Planning Commission or things like that, is a separate body of this office. They're not, we have to keep them apprised of what's going on. So I believe Tim and Greg will do what they can, but we're all incredibly busy. So just a note that says to contact our office, just to make sure we get copied or know what is happening there, would be really, really appreciated.
Sure, I don't have an issue with that, and that, you know. I always feel a lot of an issue with that and make sure that that's noted on the plans. Are you the contact person, like you would be the direct contact?
Yes.
Okay, can you send me your contact information?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions, either for Rhonda or Lindsay this time? There is no action required for this portion. This is more of an informational gathering event, so we, there is no need for a motion at this time, but we do appreciate Rhonda and Lindsay coming to, to the meeting and offering their update.
Yeah, and we, you know, when the easements will be drawn up, the EDA's attorney is here, and so I don't think we, I don't believe we need to take action at today's meeting.
Well, I know, sure.
Thank you all very much.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you guys, and I'm looking forward to getting to know you all and work with you through this process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a CARES Community Fund question, and we are going to ask Mr. White.
He's not here.
Mr. Kent White, okay, Kent is not available.
I'm taking it.
So Ms. Upsher will be replacing him on the agenda.
You have, you have an agenda item that describes this. This is just a, is extending the performance agreement with temporary housing of those who are experiencing homelessness and who have tested positive for COVID-19 or exhibiting symptoms or awaiting test results. So it's the same agreement you have already approved July, in case there is a, as is a need. And Kent wanted me to let you know that today the Mariam's House has only spent five hundred dollars on this initiative. So we hope that trend continues. So you would be.
Do we have, do we have a motion to extend the date for Mariam's House to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one? Thank you, Ms. Snead. Is there a second?
She, she didn't make a motion.
I actually had a question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Directly, it's for homelessness and a COVID tie-in, right? Is that what, the way I read it? Since they haven't spent the money already and cases are trending down, is there any thought of them re-craft, they'd actually use it?
Well, I think they've extended all the deadlines, and therefore they, on, on using up the money or doing any of that. So they want the agreement in place to be able to continue providing that assistance. I don't have any idea, and I certainly can ask the question if they have done an audit on the program and, you know, want to deploy, you know, tremendous challenges trying. you know, want to deploy, we, you know, a tremendous challenges, um, trying for all of this community funding with all the different outside partners, you know, trying to coordinate all of that. And Miriam's House, one of the best ones we, um, we have there. So I don't really know, George Anne, whether they've done an audit and said, let's use this money somewhere else. But we've gotten an extension on spending the money. So if the money is not used by that time point, it'll be redeployed for something else.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I certainly have no problem giving them an, an extension. I was just, I guess, more curious if they've spent so little so far, I'm not really sure what will change. And we certainly want the money to be well-used. That was my only.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're all doing that. Um, I can speak more on, from the long-term recovery team, which Kent is certainly a member of, that we are looking at every one of the projects that money was, um, assigned to, to see where all those projects. You heard one of those projects at the beginning of the meeting that I had to go out there and stop construction on right now. Um, so we're looking at all of that so that we can make sure that if, and as you might imagine, we normally have things going in the other direction. So they're spending more money than what was allotted there, but they're keeping tabs on it like almost on a weekly basis to see where we stand with all of it. But because these are outside partners and not inside, I think they just, they want to make sure that should anything change, that they've got that resource in place with an agreement and an, and an extension there. But I would say probably by the next meeting, they will have seriously looked into that because the, the amount of money is so small, George Anne, to your point.
Okay, that's fine. I'll be glad to make that motion now then.
Thank you, George Anne. Do we have a second?
I'll second John Stone.
Thank you, John. All right. We will go through roll call. For all those in favor, William Laverne.
Aye.
Louise Mitchell.
Aye.
Pat Mosby.
Aye.
George Anne Sneed.
Aye.
John Stone.
Aye.
And Mark Strohnsenner is an aye. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the CARES Act Business Recovery Presentation. Ms. Upsher?
Yeah, Anna and I both will hopefully take this. So what we wanted to do was the, as you know, the E D A and, um, air office was given the great honor of taking a $4 million that came from the CARES Act and deploying that out into the community. Um, and so we gained a lot of insights from, from that outreach. It was a huge lift, a huge amount of work on staff. Um, I just want to say, and I'll, I'll repeat it, but Emmeline Gwen behind me, Alicia Metter, Melissa Disman, Anna. Um, they all did, you know, at the Bank of the James, just a Herculean effort um, in getting that all taken care of and, and turned, you know, and turned around in that shorter period of time. So we gave this presentation to council, um, uh, a week, two weeks ago. And we just wanted to go over the presentation with you. Uh, we feel like that the information, we don't normally get a lot of the folks that, uh, we interacted with um, in this effort are not people that we have access to. They, they don't know a lot about our office. They have an interface there. They're very, very small businesses here in the city. But we got some real insight into who they are and, um, and how things are going for them. So we'll, I'll just go over the program itself and remind you all of what the, um, you know, what the requirements were to participate in the program. And those changed as we moved through it. We had three rounds. We'll talk about the communications and outreach, which is one of the things I'm most proud of. I don't believe anybody in the state of Virginia probably spent more time reaching out to people through multiple, um, avenues. Uh, what we learned and then we have tried to capture in a COVID world, you know, the, the real people that you helped, like some quotes and photographs of some of the actual businesses that were assisted. So it was a one-time fund that came down through, it was actually the CARES Act was given to the state of Virginia and the state of Virginia then turned around and based on population, they allocated those funds back to the municipalities. And, um, we, the city, city council immediately said of that money, $4 million, they wanted to allocate. And that was done in two chunks. I mean, the, the money came down through two times. So I think it was about $2 million each time that passed through. So it was one-time assistance to businesses that had been either closed or restricted uh, by the Commonwealth's response to the coronavirus. And the economic development, it was determined by the city attorney that the Economic Development Authority needed to be the conduit for that and to be administered by the Office of Economic Development and Tourism. So the requirements, the qualifications were, you must have been physically located in the city. You must be in business and registered with the City of Lynchburg as of March 1st, 2020. Be able to demonstrate a loss in revenue attributed to COVID by completing a financial statement of, of impact. Um, you needed to have between zero and a hundred full-time equivalent employees. So if you were the owner, you would have zero employees except yourself, but you were considered as well. Have no more than $5 million in annual gross revenues. And what that is attributed to is, um, business license tax. So Mitch has different classifications for people. And, um, that, that particular qualification, meaning that $5 million limitation was to those that, that paid the business professional occupational license, um, tax business licenses. So, uh, Mitch's office was incredibly helpful to us throughout all of this and helping identify folks. And to let us communicate directly with those folks. Same thing goes with the finance department. They worked alongside us because you needed to be current with the City of Lynchburg. Um, you needed to have no outstanding bills with the city in order to receive the, the funding. You needed to submit a copy of the other CARES Act funding you may have received, which would have been the payroll protection program, the economic injury disaster loan, emergency advance, the E I D L. All of those, you needed to let us see what, what other CARES money you had received. Because as we all know, all of this is going to be audited. And we also had to know that your business was currently open or had plans to reopen.
Is, is there a clawback if the?
No.
If you planned to reopen and you don't?
Um, so I said, we had three rounds. So in that first round, um, it was applied to businesses deemed, uh, non-essential by the Executive Order 53, whose businesses, whose business operations were impeded or closed due to COVID-19. So that would have been, you know, restaurants were closed immediately, gyms were closed immediately, you know, places like that. Um, a mi- a minimum of $100,000 in grocery receipts. And, and that's mainly, um, you know, from the standpoint that when you work with the commissioner of revenue, if you don't at least have $100,000 in grocery receipts, you don't really pay much of anything other than a license, an actual license fee. So after that, round two, they were open to essential and non-essential businesses and nonprofits and a minimum of $50,000, um, in grocery receipts. And then by the time we got to round three, um, and these came one right after the other, um, I think they were August, September and October. It was open to any business licensed in the City of Lynchburg. So, um, then in, in efforts to, um, help businesses that, that were able to reopen, but at a much reduced rate, um, we had a winterization program. And, uh, that was how do we help people, how do we help the restaurants? Um, be able to serve people, but be able to do it outdoors where they could, um, safely socially distance. So Emmeline was the pit bull on this particular, um, item. She went and ordered heaters, which, you know, obviously took a really, really long time to come in. We were very grateful to get them though, because as you might imagine, heaters were probably not existent anywhere because everybody had the same idea. But she was able to secure 75 heaters. Um, and we also went out to businesses and said, if you've already purchased, you were lucky enough to purchase heaters or tents or anything that helped winterize your, um, business, you could submit to us for reimbursement. So I'm happy to say, and you all probably saw it in the paper, we did finally get the heaters. And they've, and, and I want to give a shout out to Public Works who helped us distribute the heaters. Um, and all of the heaters landed at the Memorial Avenue, um, Public Works office. And people could either come pick them up and Emmeline and her crew actually went out and delivered some of the, the heaters. So that amounted to 15,000, you know, $565 in, um, in money based on purchasing the heaters. So we did 336 total business recovery grants, 38 winterization grants and 75 heaters. So in all total was about 3.2 million in total awards. So the communications and outreach for this was exhaustive. Um, we sent snail mail letters to everybody. We called everybody and we sent multiple, um, emails to everyone. And I think what we learned from this was that there was so much communication coming at people because of the pandemic. But I think there's so much communication that comes at people, period. And so we really felt like it took, you know, five to nine times to contact somebody before they actually felt like it was real or something that they were going to follow up on. So, you know, when you go to that level, none of us have staff to be able to do a lot of those things. But it's also the pure number of small businesses that are not necessarily ever contacted, you know? And, and we even found things like there were small businesses in town where English is not the first language that they speak. And they would, they would name somebody as the interpreter and that person would go around to all of their, um, you know, neighbors or peers and explain what the, what the program was. So it was really heartwarming because it gave us a real, you know, view into our own community and what's happening here. I think all of the larger companies or what we spend a lot of time, we know a lot about them and their ability to communicate. But what this, what CARES did for us is let us take a real deep dive into all the businesses that are here in the city. And so we, we did, um, we took media coverage wherever we could get it. And we're, we were very grateful, um, for all of that as well. And this is just showing you some of those. And so here, here's the really interesting part, and this is where Alicia and Emmeline, you know, worked really hard. We had questions that we specifically asked on the application, um, to give us, like I've said earlier, some insight into these businesses. And so this part of the presentation Anna will take, and it's, you know, it's really about what we learned about our businesses from this process.
Yeah. Um, so as Marjette said, we did, we asked a lot of questions in the application process and we deliberately designed the process so that we could learn as much as possible about, um, the businesses that were receiving this funding. Um, this, just a reminder that this is all self-reported, um, through the application process. So it gives us a snapshot, um, into the types of businesses that received this. And from that, we could draw some conclusions about the larger business community and certainly helps inform our work moving forward. So this is the distribution of businesses by size, by employment size. So you'll see that approximately 76% of awards were granted to small businesses of 10 full-time equivalent employees or less. So we definitely were reaching intentionally the smallest, um, hardest-hit businesses in the community. This chart shows the award amounts. Um, they range from $2,500 to $20,000. Um, and awards are based on the number of full-time equivalent employees. Um, the average grant award was about $10,000. And again, they were, majority of those were given to 10 employees or less. This graph shows the distribution of grants by ward. Um, you'll see that it's relatively evenly distributed. So on the, on the left is the, you know, pie chart of the distribution. On the right is every dot represents a business, one of the 336 businesses that received funding through the program. Um, this is another way to look at distribution by ward. And I think it shows even, an even more even distribution than before. So the blue line shows, um, the total number of businesses in that ward. So you'll see that Ward Two has more businesses, Ward Two receives slightly more grants. So that distribution does, um, kind of more evenly distribute, um, which we thought, you know, we think was really great. We were hitting every, every part of, every sector of the economy and every area of the city. Um, just a huge shout out here to the city's G I S department, which they're incredible at, um, you know, taking our data and turning it into, um, you know, what we can, what we can really show and learn more about, about our business community. This shows, again, this is, uh, self-reported, but we did ask some basic demographic questions about our applicants. Um, and, uh, we see that 64% of our applicants, um, were women, minority-owned and/or veteran-owned. Um, which is a really interesting statistic. Um, other may have been folks that did not answer the question, um, or obviously were either not women-owned, minority or veteran-owned. Um, but, um, that's a pretty significant chunk. And we were, um, really, you know, I think proud to be able to, um, work with this group and also see that this is, this is our business community. And perhaps there are things that we can do in the future to better serve the sector. This shows the distribution, um, by age of the businesses and it's relatively evenly distributed. Um, 52% of our businesses were more than 10 years old, meaning 48% were less than 10 years old. So age of business, um, is, it's show, you know, the older the business, the more stable the business and, um, but we were serving really sort of brand new, but also older businesses. And we, you know, you'll remember that in order to be eligible for the program, you had to have been in business and licensed, um, or register with the city by March of 2020. So, um, brand, brand-new businesses, um, were not eligible or businesses that were starting during this time. This shows the distribution, um, of businesses by industry sector. Um, obviously the restaurant food services sector was, you know, the har- one of the hardest hit, followed by retail. Um, and then you, you know, certainly personal service, um, doctors and dentist offices, um, entertainment and amusement and so forth. So, you know, I think this, this distribution of restaurants and food services were our, were our number one, um, assisted, um, industry sector. Um, this graph shows employment change. Um, we, we had each, we had applicants complete a pretty detailed, um, financial impact statement form um, that gave us, that we asked, um, questions about full-time and part-time employment numbers over a three-month period. Um, and, um, you know, this was obviously a snapshot in this time, um, between when the shutdown really began and August, when we started receiving applications. So it's not the full picture, but it shows that Lynchburg businesses, at least participating in this program, um, lost about 11% um, in full-time and declined about 15% in part-time. Um, as compared to the Commonwealth, um, which is obviously, um, you know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it does show you kind of where we were in that period of time versus the Commonwealth job loss, total job loss. You know, it's not an apples to apples comparison, but it does show you kind of where we were in that period of time versus the Commonwealth job loss. Total job loss of about six and a half percent during that same time. I think this also, we also have to look at, you know, the number, we'll see in a minute, the number of businesses receiving the paycheck protection program or EIDL loans. Also during this time. So that would certainly impact employment loss if they were able to get that other assistance. But this certainly also shows that we were helping businesses that desperately needed it the most, that were, you know, making really hard decisions about employment during this time. This graph shows the, in the financial impact statement, we also asked detailed questions about revenue loss during this, during kind of this three-month period. You know, you'll see round one is, which were the larger businesses that were also closed, right? These ones that were deemed non-essential and immediately closed in March. You see that that, that revenue loss was almost collectively about three million dollars. But it also recovered relatively quickly, you know, in April and May, when things started to open back up. Round two businesses are shown by the orange line and round three businesses by the gray line. So you see that we did really support those high. Those with the highest impact or impacted by the closures in that first round. Followed by, you know, as we opened up the applications to other businesses, those that were maybe a little less affected, but still obviously below that, they, they all demonstrated revenue loss. They all demonstrated a comeback, but not to their previous levels yet. I mean, obviously this is just April through June. So. That's about all we were, that's, you know, the time period we were able to track in the applications. We asked about reported uses of grant funding. So this shows that distribution, the majority of folks. Are kind of in this other category, which included PPE for their businesses. So supplies, equipment. And things for their, their businesses and their employees to sort of retrofit or refit businesses to, to new standards. Payroll and operations and rent utilities and mortgage were the other major buckets where folks were spending their grant funds. This shows, again, I mentioned this a minute ago, that seventy eight percent of applicants documented and shared with us that they also received the paycheck protection program or the economic injury disaster loan program. Both authorized by the federal government and administered through the Small Business Administration. So. One of the primary. Requirements of CARES funding that we had to, that we navigated through this is that. You know, CARES funding was going out from the federal government in many, many ways, right? It was going directly from the federal government through the SBA. It was going to the states. It was going to the localities. And we had to, we required that businesses. Could not use CARES funding for the same expenses during the same period. So they had to certify that if they received PPP and we, you know, received those applications to verify this. If they received PPP for payroll in April, they had to certify that any funding from our office through this, through also through the CARES Act was used for. Another expense or another period of time. So you couldn't, you couldn't use it for payroll in April, but you could use it for payroll in May if your PPP was not covering that. So. That was a. That was an important piece of all of this, but you see also that, you know, businesses that were accessing this funding were also accessing as much assistance as they could in other ways. I think one of the really unique things about our program that I think sets us apart from other programs in the Commonwealth was our partnership with. Centura PCHP Healthworks and our partnership with the Small Business Development Center. We worked closely with. Particularly Charlottesville, Harrisonburg and Williamsburg to help design this program. All communities across the Commonwealth were. You know, when we received this funding and it was allocated to the business community, we're figuring out the best ways to get this out there as quickly as possible and as equitably as possible. But we added this layer and we think that this was really a significant thing that helped our businesses in other ways. So. Thirty nine percent of our applicants requested and received wraparound services. So. Centura held town hall meetings and Q and A's with their staff and doctors. For our applicants that we organized and people were able to attend and ask questions about. You know, all the changing information that was happening all through the fall and our early winter. And the Small Business Development Center also offered one-on-one counseling to businesses in, and you know, they can do anything from finance to marketing to looking at your books to. You know, just general, general counseling. So they were able to offer that as well. And these were all free and. You know, through our partnerships with these organizations. And then lastly, we're going to just, we had a couple of business spotlights. As Marjette said, we did significant outreach and we intend to stay in touch with as many of these recipients as we can. We did a follow-up survey with all of our applicants and through that they. You know, gave us some quotes, told us how, how things were going and we just highlighting a few here. This is Stephen Baker, who is the general manager of Rise Up Climbing in downtown. Obviously as a gym, they were immediately shut their doors without knowing when they were able to reopen and so. Closed for three months and then not able to reopen at capacity, but this was an important piece of their bouncing back. The Patel family who manage and run the quality end and the travel lodge. Obviously that, you know, COVID had, has affected the tourism industry, but this was able, enabled them to keep their staff. In place and that was a, that was a really. Important thing for them. So we're, you know, showing places across the city, different sectors that were hit by this. AJ Richards from BS Grilling Company. This is a, someone that we probably wouldn't have had the opportunity to really interact with in another way and. She makes incredible line of hot sauces and she had just signed contracts for distribution in. Local grocery stores and this really affected her ability to distribute and to get out there and things just slowed down and kind of stopped for a little while. So she's, this is something that has helped her keep going as well. But again, a, a micro business, if you will, she is the only employee. And so, you know, showing that distribution. And then again, I mentioned the follow-up survey that we did. Seventy percent of respondents said that the process was easy to navigate. That is a real achievement in this whole program. I think the thing that we heard the most from folks is that they want continued consistent information from the city on things, either from our office or for the city at large. And then we heard certainly that, you know, Lynchburg small businesses were directly affected by the pandemic and this was a critical component to ensure that they were. Able to remain open, retain staff and continue serving. So I'll pass it back to Marjette for the last slide or two. We're happy to answer questions.
So, you know, once again, I've already said, you know, thanks to the people on our team that. Really, as soon as the pandemic hit, were deployed to do things a lot differently than we had ever done them, but I'm. Incredibly grateful, never let a good crisis go to waste that we are. We are now moving in a direction where I believe that we're much more in touch with their business community. And what it is that they might need and, and how we address that. But this was a team effort and it happened in a really, really short period of time. And nobody had a playbook for this. So that can always be fraught with danger when you're working in local government because we're public servants and we represent everybody. We can't pick and choose, nor do we want to. And so this list that you have before you here is all of the people and, and I would just say that they. None of them knew what was, you know, exactly how to navigate this. And. I've said it before and I'll say it again, the long-term recovery team. Which is made up of Mitch Knuckles, the Commissioner of Revenue, Donna Witt, the Finance Director for the City, Kent White. The. Community Development and Deputy City Man, Interim Deputy City Manager. And Jeff Bandy, who's the City Assessor, which are all kind of critical people to what I do anyway, every day. If somebody wants to build something, if somebody wants to expand something, if somebody, you know, is looking at a parcel, all of these things are really important and I, I speak with them. You know, individually a lot, but we're now meeting as a team and the information that we get from one another has been invaluable. So. Pandemic or no pandemic, I am really hopeful that that group continues to meet, to inform one another. As to what things are happening in the city. I think we could be a lot more. You know, responsive, because if Mitch sees that something is becoming a problem with people being able to pay their B poll or M and T or. Or if he's getting feedback from people on certain things or Jeff Bandy. We're able to go out and, and with them even sometimes meet with folks and. And clear up things or perhaps put a program in place that's going to help somebody. We don't have to wait forever until. You know, the person's gotten, you were really, really frustrated. So. Lynchburg City Council for having faith in us to deploy the money. The Long-Term Recovery Team, the City Managers Office, Reed has just been absolute rock star through. This entire process, even to the point of where he really took a leadership role when it came to vaccinations. He recognized that we're. The city along being surrounded by four counties that don't have fire, police, emergency services, a lot of those types of things. Came down to our office to look for a mass vaccination site. Has been standing beside the Health Department and Centura to get vaccines employed. Came down to our office two weeks ago and deployed our office to go out to the 1B manufacturers. And get their employees vaccinated. I don't know of anywhere else. I've gotten so many. Positive responses from the manufacturers that if they have an office somewhere else. Like the headquarters is not here, their headquarters is standing up and taking notice that the city of Lynchburg, Virginia has reached out to their plants. And is getting people vaccinated and Reed heard us when we talked about how. The manufacturers had upheld the economy here and their folks were coming to work every day. They couldn't tell the work. And they were doing everything they could to keep them and their customer, their employees and their customers safe. So I can't say enough about. Reed and his leadership throughout this pandemic. The Assessors Office, everybody in the Assessors Office, everybody in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, Billings and Collections, that group was manually calculating. You know, whether anybody had any outstanding bills from the city, from all the different areas that they, that they might have had. And I think we had a pretty incredible rate of. People being able to, to pay those bills off. And while you might say, wow, you know, they had to pay that first, you can't imagine what a relief that is to a small business to be able to get that monkey off your back. And pay that bill and then still have money left over to try to stand your business up. So. My entire team, which I've mentioned, all of you all for stepping in and all these agreements and everything we've gotten you to sign and. The Bank of the James was incredible through this process because they've never done, I don't believe, anything like this before either.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions from Marjette or Anna?
No questions, just a quick comment that, that's really. Impressive. The connections are amazing and it's really fantastic to be able to touch so many businesses and it definitely. Built you, built the brand of the EDA and of the Office of Economic Development. So, good job. It's great.
Bill?
Bill, you're muted.
Will any of this new money, Billion Nine, come through us?
I, I have no idea. The city's going to get about sixteen million dollars, but we've had no direction. On. How that money. Can be used. So I know there are a lot of things in the bill. That speak to small business and loans. We've had a lot of questions about some of those things already. But as far as I know, the money that's physically coming to the city. And I've talked with Donna as, as late as yesterday, we, we have no direction on how that can be used. So far, Bill.
Don't plan any vacations anytime soon.
No other questions? We'll go to our staff report.
How about if I just tell you, we've been very busy? You do? You're the best.
I have it, Marjette. I can go through it if you want me to.
You know what? I might have tried to save a couple of trees and not put something on.
I can, I can take it, Marjette. Can you all hear us on?
Appreciate you.
Can you hear us on the Zoom?
So. We, we reported the same report we just showed to you on March ninth. We, we went through budget. At the March ninth meeting as well. So far, so good. We are continuing to put our newsletter out there, which I think is very well received. Back to Anna's point of the business community wanting. Information from my office. And I think the, the newsletter's taken on a new look back to John's point is that we've built these relationships. And having much more consistent contact with businesses. So knowing what they've got going on and. And the cool things that some of them are doing to recover or even expand during this time. We, we just have a lot more, we're, we're closer to the ground on all of that and can capture it. So. The, the newsletter. I think is, is. You know, much more pointed to actually what is going on in the community right now. Krista Boothby, who works for our office and has worked for the city for like six years. Is going to be leaving and we have already posted, as you might imagine, we've already posted that job. So that we can get that position rehired. We are also. We've posted and closed, our office is taking over the special. Events, the former special events position that used to be under Parks and Rec. It will now be the Community Engagement and Events Coordinator position. We've already posted it, closed it, and Anna's got interviews. Set up. I don't even know how to begin to tell you other than the CARES Act, what it's been like for. Me, Emmeline, Alicia and Anna in contacting the businesses, the 1B manufacturers. To get the vaccinations done. I've worked the vaccination site. All of the Saturdays that our businesses have come through there, couldn't be any prouder. We've probably given over two thousand vaccinations to. Manufacturers, employees. Here in the city. And as I've said, that, that's been a full court press. And as soon as we get out of this EDA meeting, we will be moving to the 1C. Categories and following up. With our 1B folks all the time to see if they have additional employees to do that. I think that's some of the most important work that we've ever done in our office and also. Like I said, Reed. Made that, you know, made that call and I just think that that's what, you know, that's what local government can do to really be meaningful. At this time to, to businesses. We are also working on digital kiosk. I guess the guys outside couldn't wait for me anymore. The digital kiosk, these are, you know, these are going to be at various sites and anchors around the, the city. And that's one of those things where you kind of. When you had the opportunity, you knew that would be a good idea. That was something that probably we would have never been able to get in a budget or it'd been a long time from now because it's innovative and. You know. Is technology driven, but it's also taken a lot longer and a lot more work on our side to get all of that, that done. But I believe that is. Moving forward. So. We have developed fifteen. LYH videos on the tourism side to help promote the city for meetings and conferences. So we've done all that. That's our response. From the pandemic, when people can't come here, we've got videos now that we can take. Out to them. We've also put the finishing touches on a sports facilities guide. We got a grant to do that, to capture all of the cities. And the anchor institutions, sports facilities to try to be out there and, and as soon as the. Restrictions are lifted, these, the, the sporting events. restrictions are lifted, these, the, the sporting events are a real big opportunity for the city on the tourism side. The blueprint reset has been released to the task force and stakeholders and the media. The Steering Committee for the New City Branding Initiative met for the second time in March. Last week they met to look at the results of the visioning workshops. All of that is going really, really well. And I'll, I'll ask, John's participated in that from the EDA side of it. But I'm just really excited. I'm really excited about the input that people have given us. And we had over sixty people show up for the visioning workshop. And all of our steering committee has shown up when we've asked them to. The feedback has been really, really good. And, and the product that's coming along, I, I am very encouraged by. We are working right now to, for plans on reopening the, the museum and, and providing visitor services. So there's no loss growing under the feet of your Economic Development and Tourism Department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Marjette. Does anyone have any other questions for Marjette or Anna?
Marjette? This is Pat. Just a question regarding the city branding. Any idea when we'll meet again to discuss that further?
I can answer that. So Pat, this, we do, we have a steering committee that has seen a first draft.
Yeah, Anna speaking, but I don't.
I am. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the chambers, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, so Pat, we, we have a steering committee that is, has met to see a first review of the brand assets that has been established and are providing some feedback on that. And then our next steps will be, we'll probably have two brand essence platforms that are all based on like, on the brand platform, but two messages that we're gonna test. So we'll come back to all of those that participated in the visioning workshop and also back out to the, probably the general public and some targeted ways to do some survey work and then also test those messages to see which one kind of rises to the top. Okay, that'll be our step. In touch with you for that.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the staff?
Mark?
Yes, sir.
This is Ted. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. I may see you this afternoon. Is that still on? I, I need you to sign fiscal impact statement for the VS bond issue. And I'm gonna need Bill Laverne to sign a certificate. I have to prepare a report to council. And so if, Bill, if you'll be around today and tomorrow, and Mark, am I gonna see you this afternoon?
Yes, I'll, I'll be there a few minutes before one.
One, okay. All right, Bill?
Have your assistant to email me and I'll, we'll set up appointment when you're in the office.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any issues for closed session that I'm aware of.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
So with no further items on the agenda, this meeting is officially closed.